It is November 14th, 2002, and the time is 6:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present, and notice the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. At this time, the Board of Trustees will move into a closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074 for consultation with the Board's Attorney and also under personnel. No formal action will be taken in a closed meeting. We will be back here in this room to take any action. The time is now 6:29 PM, and the Board of Trustees will now reconvene in open meeting. We welcome everyone this evening. We're glad you're here. This evening, we have with us Daniel Rory, who is a Regional Director of Men of Honor, that will offer our invocation, and we have a group of students from Beasley Elementary that will lead us in our pledges this evening. So, we invite you to stand at this time for our invocation and the pledges.
Please bow your heads in prayer with me. Lord, I lift up before you today the great city and citizens of Mesquite. Because you determine our boundaries, we want to thank you for allowing us to be a part of this great city. We're thankful because you have such great plans for our city and the individuals that live and work here. We ask you to continue these great blessings and increase us in every good way. We pray first for the citizens of our city, that the gospel of the kingdom would reach their hearts, and that all would come to know you as Lord and Savior. We pray that a spiritual awakening would take place in the hearts of our students and our citizens. We ask your blessings on each family represented by these board members and all who selflessly serve our city. We ask you to stir and provoke our citizens to love one another and to increase in good works. We ask for unity and peace, and the increase of strong and loving neighbors. We ask for an increase in volunteerism, and that you would raise up strong servant leaders like those representing today, because you said that the greatest among us should be the servants of all. From our schools, leaderships, to our citizenry, I pray you would bless these servant leaders and their families. Blessed is the city whose God is the Lord. The citizens of Mesquite are blessed because you are exalted in prayer today, and we ask you to continue to bless, strengthen, revive, and uphold the citizens of Mesquite. Lord, help us to continue the vision you've placed in our mayor's heart and this board and staff, the vision for Mesquite to become the safest, cleanest, kindest, and most employed city in the world. Cover our schools, give favor and wisdom to our teachers, protect our students, and direct us throughout this school year. We ask these things in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
This pledge is brought to you by Beasley Leadership. Please stand. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Now to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Y'all step to the microphone and introduce yourselves to us.
My name is Rowan Meeks, and I'm from Beasley Elementary, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name's Yasmina Pacheco. I also go to Beasley Elementary, and I'm also in the 5th grade.
My name is Evelyn Alcaraz. I'm Beasley Elementary and in the 5th grade.
My name is Colin Bailey. I'm currently attending Beasley Elementary.
Y'all did a great job. Thank you very much. Mr. Rory, thank you for being here. Next on the agenda is our board moment. Do we have anyone here from PTA this evening?
Good evening. I'm Emily Buchanan, your council president for this school year, and I would like to report on our membership. Right now, we're sitting at 3,466 members across the board for our district. Would really love to see those numbers come out. If you haven't joined a PTA, go to joinpta.org and join your local PTA. If you have students at multiple campuses, you can join every single campus. It doesn't just have to be one. This month's award for PTA that the state gives us is called Golden Apple, and it is for 100% staff at every campus becoming a PTA member. Right now, locally, we have five campuses. I would love to see that number go up. That way, we can all get our Golden Apple for the month of November. And when you do get the Golden Apple, you get a little banner that you can wear at our training in July, which is called Launch, and you get to brag, hey, my school had 100% staff join our PTA. February 27th, we have advocacy rally day, and with that, we take seniors and juniors to Austin to go and speak with senators and people in Austin that make our laws and all that good stuff. I'm horrible at this, sorry. But it's very important for your juniors and seniors to become members. That way, they can go and have their voices heard in Austin on February 27th. Recently, we joined in with Replay Talk and was at the Fall Festival at Town East Mall, and it was amazing. I love getting to meet new community members and people, and it's just a really fun event. I love doing all of them with Replay Talk. Other than that, I don't believe I have anything else for you. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Go ahead, Dr. Rivera.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to take a moment. The Mesquite ISD family is deeply saddened by the loss of Jonathan Jackson, one of our spouses of one of our family members, and we want to just take a moment to recognize that. He passed away yesterday evening, and we're deeply saddened by it.
Next on the agenda is our student and staff guest. Laura, we'll start with the Apple Corps Honoraries.
We will. We have two Apple Corps Honoraries to induct this evening. The first is from Agnew Middle School, Marlee Garcia. She is a 7th grade science teacher, and I believe we have a video to introduce her to you.
Hi, I'm Brett Peterson, and I'm the principal here at Agnew Middle School. It is with great honor that we get to celebrate Marlee Garcia as a Mesquite ISD Apple Corps recipient. Ms. Garcia works every day to make her science class fun and engaging while still holding students accountable for their learning. Her ability to take the curriculum and make it come alive is the way that she makes her class a student-centered classroom. Congratulations on this great honor.
For me, teaching is important because if you are touching the kids' lives, you are making an impact. We're training the next generation, not only academically, but also prepare them to work together as a team, to communicate better with each other, to do things for the community. Teaching is not just books and letters and vocabulary. Teaching goes beyond what happens in the classroom.
Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional leaders nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore, be it resolved that the Board officially welcomes Marlee Garcia into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this 14th day of November, 2022. Thank you very much.
I want to do what my -- good evening. I want to do what my students told me today. I told them that I was coming here, and they said, you're gonna be fine, you're gonna do good. And then they said, just do what you tell us to do. Believe in yourself, you'll be fine. Just feel comfortable. And I'm like, yes, yes, yes. I want to start off by introducing my family. I have my husband, Jonathan, my daughters Joyce and Crystal, and my grandson Elijah. Thank you, guys, for your support, your prayers, and encouragement. I love them. I am honored to be here receiving this Apple Corps Award. I want to thank God for all the amazing teachers that have impacted my life as a student, and for blessing me with the opportunity to touch students' lives and also impact their lives for 17 years. It is my hope that the same way that those teachers impacted my life, and that they made a difference in me, and they pushed me to new limits, I'm hoping that I can do the same thing. But more importantly, I'm hoping that they know that I care for them, and that they know that I love them enough to do those things. Next, I want to thank Dr. Rivera and each and every one of you for such an honor. Working in Mesquite ISD has been one of the most rewarding years of my career, and I want you to know that your leadership and commitment to this community makes Mesquite ISD the place to be. That's why whenever I know of an opening or any teachers that is looking, okay, come on, come on, come on to the best. Come on to the best district. I also want to thank my principal, Mr. Peterson, and my Agnew family. It is such a joy to work with them. They are an example of commitment and dedication. I consider myself lucky to be working alongside them. Lastly, to all the excellent educators that I have been blessed to know and to work with them throughout the years, I have learned from them new things to implement, new strategies, ideas, and they have mentored me into becoming the teacher I am today. So, for that, I am in debt with them. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia, we would invite your family to stand, please. And if you're a colleague from Agnew Middle School, if you'll stand. Okay, Laura.
Our next inductee this evening is Katherine Henderson from Gray Elementary School. She's a first grade teacher with 12 years of experience, and nine of those in Mesquite ISD. And here's a video to introduce her to you.
Ms. Henderson, congratulations on being chosen by your peers to be inducted into the Apple Corps. We are so proud of you. You are amazing. You not only meet the needs of every single student that you encounter, but it is an honor to watch you help and support staff members as well. It is amazing to go into your classroom and watch the things that you do on a daily basis to meet the needs of students. Phenomenal lessons, great relationships, and, most importantly, a kind heart.
One person I will always remember is my 1st grade teacher, and she was a teacher that checked on me past being in her classroom. So, one thing I always tell my kids is that the classroom is their safe place. They don't have to worry about anything else that's going on, and I love seeing my 2nd graders, 3rd graders, 4th graders pass when I've taught them, and they still come up to me, and they hug me. They know that I want to hear how they're doing. So, I think that's one thing that teaching is all about, is just making those relationships and just reminding them that you're always there for them.
Let me read this proclamation for you. It's whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of the MISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore, be it resolved that the Board officially welcomes Katherine Henderson into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this 14th day of November, 2022. Congratulations. We appreciate you.
So, I'm gonna start off by telling a quick story. In 2010, the summer before my senior year of college, I had the unique opportunity to teach English to kindergartners in Beijing, China. My students were from South Korea, and they knew zero English. Over the course of five weeks, I went through some of the hardest, yet most rewarding, challenges. To say I did well would definitely be an overstatement. Many times, the pressure and language barrier got the best of me. Let's face it, what college student wouldn't struggle? It was in the midst of these trials, I had two professors ask me if I would consider changing my major. This was heart-wrenching, but in many ways, I saw it as a challenge. With the support of a few other professors who brought out the best in me, I managed to complete my senior year and student teaching, knowing I was indeed meant to be a teacher. Furthermore, God showed me that I was not defined by my failures, but instead by how I overcame them. I arrived in Mesquite ISD for my 4th year of teaching, and it's here in this district. I have worked with some of the most amazing mentors and leaders, including Ms. Willie, Ms. Spanuelos, and Mrs. Laverne. These ladies, along with many others, have helped push me to be -- helped me in my often self-deprecating self to be the teacher I am today. Furthermore, I am thankful for the professional development opportunities, leadership roles, and the ability to work with new teachers in their first year of teaching. I hope that one day, I can be a mentor to new teachers as my district family has been to me. Finally, my friends, I never knew that coming to Mesquite ISD over nine years ago, I would make some of the greatest friends I could have ever asked for. They are my biggest cheerleaders, my encouragers, and I am now the proud godmother of, I think, the one that just left. And my other nephew over there. Let's not forget, too, that they're the first ones to run to the cameras in the office when I do something embarrassing. That's true friendship. To everyone else that's here tonight, the board, my fellow colleagues, and my mom and dad, who are right over there. Thank you so much for this award and for celebrating with me. And to the two professors who thought I couldn't do it, I wish they could see me now. Thank you.
We will ask if you're a family member of Katherine's. Please stand. And then a colleague from Gray Elementary. We have any of you here tonight? Thank you both for the contributions that you make to our district. We're successful because of quality educators like you two. Laura?
All right. Each month, we also recognize one of our outstanding para professionals, and tonight is no exception. I'd like to invite Regina Jackson, principal at AC New, to come and introduce us to her Star Para of the Month.
My Star Para has been an employee of Mesquite ISD for 16 years, all 16 years spent at AC New. And it is Ms. Contreras, Ms. Jessica Contreras. She has served many families, obviously, during that 16 years, and she has supported many siblings. There are adjectives used to describe her, such as being friendly, nice, kind, helpful, supportive, and a servant leader. I have the distinct pleasure of being the principal at AC New, but also the honor and privilege of working alongside Ms. Contreras every single day. She makes it a priority to ensure that families have a very positive first experience with AC New, and ensuring that their students, their kids, will have a good experience while at AC New. One of the things she does is she walks students around personally on their first day. She doesn't have to do that, but she wants to do it. She's also currently working on her own experience to be a teacher, and she's indicated that she wants to go into elementary, but I plan on working my magic and seeing if I can get her where at AC New. I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Jessica Contreras.
We have some students to recognize this evening, too. We're gonna start with our student council presidents. And to begin, from West Mesquite High School, we have Natalie Gutierrez. Her sponsor is Stephanie Dodson. From Mesquite High School, we have two student council presidents, Delilah Abouada and Dulce Mendez. And their sponsor is Erin Van Siggel. From Potteet High School, we have Lauren Gamblin. And now for middle school National Junior Honor Society Presidents, Angel Apaseo from AC New. From Terry Middle School, National Junior Honor Society President, Kennedy Williams. From Kimbrough Middle School, two National Junior Honor Society Presidents, we have Arandi Ramos and Diana Roberts, and their sponsor is Jennifer Miller. From West Mesquite High School, the National Honor Society President is Stephanie Harris. From Mesquite High School, the National Honor Society President Samantha Zabata, and her sponsor Rhonda Batena. From Potteet High School, the National Honor Society President is Abigail Huggins. Her sponsor is Myra Pratt. All right, moving on to athletics. From Potteet High School, the tennis team, they were the District 12 5A district champs and area qualifiers, and their sponsor or their coach is Dr. Phil Gordon. Okay. From Potteet High School, we have the Boys Cross Country Team. They were bi-district qualifiers, and the coach is Shayla Prince. Don't leave yet. This is also the Girls Cross Country Team, and they were regional qualifiers as well. From John Horn High School, we have the 6A Cross Country Regional Qualifier, Eric Hernandez. And Eric's coach is Tammy McDue. Next is the Tennis Team from West Mesquite High School. They are bi-district qualifiers, and their coach is Hernando Ledesma. All right, Cross Country Teams from West Mesquite High School. We have the Boys Team. They were the 12 5A district champs and regional qualifiers, and the Girls Team were regional qualifiers. Their coach is Tara Yater. Also from West Mesquite High School is Adam Fuentes. He is the Boys District 5A -- sorry, 12 5A Cross Country Champion, and again, his coach is Terry Yater. From North Mesquite High School, we have the Boys Cross Country Team. They are regional qualifiers. Their coaches Justina Malone and Greg Hunter. And these are the Girls Cross Country Team from North Mesquite, District 12 5A district champions and regional qualifiers, and again, coaches Justina Malone and Greg Hunter. And Abigail Ortega is already up there. She is a member of this team, and she's also the District 12 5A Cross Country Champion. And from Mesquite High School, we have representatives from the Tennis Team. They are bi-district qualifiers, and their coach is Linda Howig. Tonight, we have two community members that we would like to recognize for their support of Mesquite ISD. The first is Teresa Jackson from Sharing Life. If Teresa's here, go ahead and go up front. And is Mr. Parsat And is Mr. Parsatam here? From Budget Inn, well, we will recognize Budget Inn in just a moment. Teresa's an advocate for our families and aids in a variety of ways to support them who have lost their housing and those families in difficult financial situations. Under her leadership, Sharing Life is a bright beacon in the community and a treasured resource to our family support team. And then we have Budget Inn of Texas. And Mr. Parsatam ensures that families and students who temporarily stay at Budget Inn of Texas are made to feel welcome, and he immediately connects them with school district resources. Under his leadership, he has worked with Sharing Life to provide scholarships to students in need of accommodations who don't have a permanent address, and he has even been known to wait outside the hotel to make sure students being dropped off at the hotel get inside safely. So, thank you. Our next community partner is our Read Play Talk partner, and we have a video to show you how they're getting involved in this effort.
This month, we are happy to recognize the United Women of Faith from St. Mark's United Methodist Church right here in Mesquite. The women's group here has supported Read Play Talk in various capacities since the initiative was introduced several years ago. From being guest readers at our storytimes at Towne East Mall to financially supporting the Read Play Talk bus, these women have been so supportive of the Read Play Talk initiative.
Our president of our United Women of Faith, Millie Arnold, and I attended the original presentation by Dr. Brunlin and Gary about Read Play Talk over six years ago.
It's significant for children to learn to have reading comprehension by the third grade.
And we were so taken and so impressed by the program that we wanted to incorporate it here at our church and with our community.
Recently, they have installed a little free library here at their church for their community to use. They want to make books and resources readily available for families in their area and give them easy access to books to read at home.
Over time, we've had the work done on the little lending library, and it's now out front. And books have been placed in there, and we have children that are using the books and reading. We're just so thrilled to be a partner with Mesquite ISD.
I am hoping to see that little lending library empty with books on a regular basis. We have many of our members that are bringing books to church and we're resupplying the books on a regular basis.
We are so grateful for the United Women of Faith's support of Read Play Talk, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with them for years to come.
That concludes our recognitions this evening.
Okay. Congratulations, everybody. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Entertain a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Mr. Rose to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is our audience portion. Is there anyone here that wishes to address this board on an item that is on our agenda? We will, we'll take about a five-minute recess, if that's okay with everybody. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Time is now 7:10 PM. We will reconvene from our short recess. Next item on the agenda is under Personnel. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, thank you. We're President, Mr. Everett. Yeah, well, tonight, we're going, it's administration recommendation for a position that's going to come vacant in December because one of our family members, after a short stint, has decided to retire. Mr. Clay Cottles, so we would like to recommend Jeremy Lewis as our recommendation for Executive Director of Tech Services. Jeremy, as I read your bio, move up to the lectern, please. So Jeremy has completed 18 years of service in public education, all in Mesquite ISD. During this time, he has served in various capacities, computer tech, Apple Network Administrator, network operations supervisor, and technical service manager. Before joining MISD, Jeremy worked manufacturing and construction. Throughout his career, he has earned certifications such as JMMF, certification for Casper Suite, and those certifications as desktops, laptop, servers, and printers. Finally, Jeremy has earned two associate applying science degrees, one in electronics technology, and the other in telecommunications from Eastfield College. And I can honestly say, as worked with Jeremy on several projects, he's a professional, and he is dedicated to Mesquite ISD. So our recommendation is Jeremy Lewis. This is an action item. Mr. President?
We have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Ms. Collier to approve Jeremy Lewis as Executive Director of Technical Services. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank the school board and Dr. Rivera and Kara Jackson, too, that couldn't be here tonight, for the opportunity to be part of the technical services team. I would also like to thank my family here in attendance tonight for the support, my mom, my wife Rebecca, my two girls, Madeline and Susanna, and Ollie's the little boy sitting there. One of the reasons I'm here tonight is that the district invested a great deal into my professional growth, and I'm grateful for that. The, I'm especially thankful to Clay Cottles for his example of leadership that I've been able to imitate. And my experience in working in tech services has given me a great insight into the depth of talent and the work ethic of that team, and it's given me a greater appreciation of the opportunity to lead that team. So I believe that with the support of the tech services team, we can continue to improve the support that we give our staff members and our students, and we can help implement two new technologies that will make student learning even more effective in the future. Thank you.
Clay Cottles is in the audience, and Clay, we recognize all the things you've done for Mesquite ISD in your long tenure, and we appreciate you so much, but keep your phone handy in case Jeremy needs to call you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is an effectiveness report. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, sir. Ms. Carolina Portillo, I think is going to be presenting our effectiveness report. Come on, Ms. Portillo.
Good evening, distinguished members of the leadership team, board members, and the remaining of the audience. Thank you so much for letting me present. A little bit about what we do. We have chosen the core values for the district, or the district core values, because we truly believe that's our flag. So we have people first as our first item tonight. It is well-known that the number of new members in our district is huge. We have 248 bilingual teachers, well, 25 of them are new, are brand-new to the field. Our team, it's, has invested a lot of time and effort trying to support those teachers in this endeavor. They have been coaching them one-on-one, they have been modeling lessons for them, they are out there just helping and supporting those teachers and those campuses. On the other side, we have 61 ESL positions or teachers out there. 18 of them are brand-new. My team, or our team, is also supporting all of those teachers on a weekly basis, planning with them, going to their classrooms, observing their lessons, providing support in, all the way, all the way that they can. From the front office staff perspective, we are also providing support to all these brand-new secretaries and front office staff who are just learning from scratch. In some cases, there's a learning curve, and they are going through it. With the support of the B Center, we have a group of ladies working on training those secretaries and staff members so they can achieve their goal. Second, we have commitment to community, because we truly believe that we are all committed to the community through all the activities and offers that we have for the community. So we have, we have a partnership with the Wilkinson Center, has been about three years or so that we have been working with them, offering ESL classes for our, this is adult classes, of course, for our parents and family members. We have also Microsoft Office with an ESL component. Through this course, the parents can develop the abilities and the skills needed to get their certification, the Microsoft certification. We also have a program to prepare teacher assistants with also an ESL component. So all these three activities are offered through the partnership with the Wilkinson Center. There is a brand-new activity or program that we developed last year. This is our second year offering this program. It is called Mesquite ISD Leben Familia. The goal or the target of this program is to help parents work with the students at home in their reading, developing their reading activities and the reading skills. We teach them how to address questions that the students might have. We teach them how to read along, you know, with the students and address some of the star type or level questions. We also have the GED classes that we also provide for our parents. These parents that could not finish their high school level, and they're trying to pursue the high school diploma, we offer these classes in both English and Spanish. That's also through the Wilkinson Center partnership. That's also through the Wilkinson Center partnership. Recently, we can tell that we're honored to be impacting 425 families. These are some pictures of classes that we have provided or, you know, we have enjoyed with these parents, and we also have some pictures of the graduation when we distributed the diplomas, the diplomas for them. Third item in this, in this presentation is continuous learning. We take care of the curriculum piece for bilingual and ESL classrooms. Our team writes curriculum, develops it, and then help, helping the implementation of it by modeling lessons. We take care of the bilingual and bilingual curriculum from pre-K3 all the way to fifth grade, and we also take care of the ESL curriculum from pre-K3 as well till 12th grade. We, this year, we invested a lot of resources or funds in supplemental materials for the classrooms and for the ESL teachers' use as well. We invested in a platform, in a new platform, to improve our LPAC processes and procedures, trying to avoid issues, mistakes, and trying to make the data as accurate as possible. Summit K through 12 is also a huge investment we spent money in. Summit K through 12's target is the development of language abilities or skills. It is mocking the TELPASS assessment pretty much, so students are developing their reading, writing, speaking, and listening abilities. Professional Learning Day's trainings has also been offered for our teachers and all the coaches. And as a new, a brand-new initiative this year is the Spanish Spelling Bee. It's, it's already, you know, making some changes out there. Campuses are very excited. Some of the, some of them already had their first competition, trying to get the finals or trying to get to the finals. The final competition will be district-wide here at the PDC, in the vision room. All of you have been invited. That will be December the 6th, again, for the very first time. I have a very short video that I want to share. That just happened this week. It is happening at 10 different locations right now, and as I said, we are going to be hosting the final competition here at the PDC on December the 6th. Okay, the last one, cultivating culture. Our team of facilitators have been walking around since day one, visiting our campuses, visiting our classrooms, trying to provide some feedback and some ideas, strategies, so we can improve the delivery of that curriculum that we are writing for them. They participate in all the PLCs, trying also to provide the best feedback they can, always trying to support our campuses and teachers, and of course, the students. We have been working also in collaboration with, I'm sorry, personnel or human resources, trying to improve our current situation. We are in the middle of a shortage, and that's, that's not news for any of us. We have been recruiting substitute teachers and substitute aides. We support the HR department by trying to analyze the certificates from people who don't speak English, they are not fluent speakers, but they do speak Spanish. They are professionals, some of them are certified, some of them have their bachelor's degree, so they are more than, than ready to help those bilingual classrooms when needed. So we analyze their credentials, try to make sure that they are high, you know, high-qualified before we hire them. We have also trying to help with the ESL recruit, ESL teachers recruitment. So far, we have, we are blessed that we could find three different ESL teachers to support our district in the middle of the year, with, one with a vacancy that we had since day one, and two itinerant teachers that are helping with the workload that we have at some campuses. Newcomers program is another big piece. We have always offered our newcomer students at the campus level, a specific program at the campus level. This year, we decided to create a new initiative, and it's a newcomers district-level kind of, kind of thing. So the, the main target or the main purpose is to address the affective needs of the students, just talking to them and going through so many different conversations that they cannot have at school, and having fun, pretty much having fun with them. We expect to increase the number of participants in the, you know, in the future, but we have had a very good experience with them. We have a couple of pictures, like, for example, the one, the one class right before Halloween, we knew that that family did not have the resources probably to buy new, new costumes or things like that, so we decided to create mummies. So they, they had fun using toilet paper, so very, very inexpensive items, but they had a blast. So we also have a picture from Horn, who shared with us these, these activities that they, they also offered to their, to their students, to their newcomers, newcomers students. Last, but not least, our summer school story. It was not supposed to play, but let's go. Okay, that was a great experience. This year, we had the opportunity to offer the program, the summer school program, at two different locations for the very first time. It was, it was amazing. The kids had a wonderful experience, so the teachers and the administrators, so we are, we are very blessed to have had that opportunity. To close, to close the, the presentation, I would like to ask you this question. This is not what we are all here for. We're people committed to the community who cultivate culture through continuous learning. We are Mesquite ISD.
Thank you, Ms. Portillo.
I want to say thank you for what you guys do. Having been a part of a bilingual school, it's awesome to watch the students learn two languages, which, you know, is such a help in this world, and we appreciate everything that you do, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is under Administration. It's an action item to canvass the election results for the November 8, 2022 voter approval tax rate election. Dr. Rivera, would you like to say something regarding this?
I think Mr. Rose is going to read something, but before he does, right? Before he does, I, I want to say thank you to the Mesquite community for the approval of the VATRE. It was a, it was a great show of support from the community, and we will hold true to our promise. We will spend those dollars in salaries, safety and security, and academic programs for our kids. We do not take it for granted that a lot of people, MEA, administration, community members, assisted, assisted us in the efforts of communicating the importance of this VATER. It is, it is easier, I'm not going to say easy, but it's easier to do a bond because people understand what a bond does and stand for in terms of facilities, renovations, and those sort of things. It is extremely difficult to understand what a VATER is, especially when you go into the ballot box and it just says 12% increase on the maintenance and operations. So it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you to the community that supported us. We will hold true to our promise, and thank you to those that worked very hard to communicate and educate our community.
Significance is ever accomplished alone, and, and this was demonstrated on the election that occurred last Tuesday, so thank you again, Dr. Rivera, for your leadership, for Laura, and for all the things you did, for all of our community that supported it. Thank you so much. There were over 33,500 votes that were cast, and like Dr. Rivera said, we pledged to do our part to fulfill the obligation that we conveyed prior to the election.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the unofficial cumulative results as of Wednesday, November 9, 2022, at 4:51 AM. 16,903 votes for the proposition, 16,622 votes against the proposition, total votes cast 33,525.
We have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Mr. Bingham. Is there any discussion?
I want to thank Dr. Rivera personally for all the, I don't know if anybody worked harder, Laura, you too, in your department, but Dr. Rivera worked incredibly hard, and just want to tell you thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is report on ESER. Here comes Mr. Orlando Riddick to the podium.
I do, I need Dion's song that he plays as he's walking through the locker room is what I need right now. My hype music is what I need. Well, good evening, board members, Board President Everett, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Rivera. Again, I'm Orlando Riddick, your ESER Effectiveness Officer. Tonight, I will take you through the 2022-2023 Beginning of the Year ESER Report. The presentation will emphasize several aspects of our core areas, including our previous July budget report, which now has several items funded under each of the awarded grants, along with a COVID-19 update. I'll spend a moment during the presentation to focus on two areas, one being our meaningful consultation, which we conduct every six months, and the second being our delivery of our BOY data. Before I do that, I want to take the opportunity to introduce you to our ESER Effectiveness Team members. We have several specialists who work at the campus, and we've divided that campus up. You may know these ladies as they've all been, they have been campus principals, as well as served and/or currently serving as leaders on the administration team. Dr. Cummings, who you see first next to me, serves as our secondary specialist, handling all of our middle and high schools. Sherry, excuse me, Sherry Beard, who is two over from her, handles our Petite and West Elementary feeder patterns, and Lisa Millsaps, who sits between them, handles our Mesquite and North Mesquite Elementary feeder pattern. Ms. Millsaps and Ms. Beard both share the Horn Elementary feeder pattern. And our final member is Jennifer Mobley, who keeps up with our, keeps up with and tracks our funding and spending. You saw this previously in July, when the ESER report was delivered. Well, I just wanted to reference this back again, because what you're viewing is ESER Funding Together. It's a table that references all the primary areas that we work through, which is the safe reopening of schools, learning recovery, social emotional learning, and connectivity. I want to keep emphasizing the goal through this organized grant focuses around learning recovery and what we can get back from the pandemic. ESER 1 was committed funding that we began with primarily for safe return to in-person instruction. Bulleted, bulleted below are some of the items leveraged by this funding. Let me give you a moment to look at those. Largest item that came out of here was our bipolar ionization system. You'll see later in the presentation of reference to that in our survey. This is placed in every building so that we can mitigate any airborne items that, that came through, either now flu, but then COVID. ESER 2 is our secondary funding source and has four focused areas divided closely. Budgeted below are several of the resources leveraged with this funding, and again, let me allow you a moment to review those. You can see with this particular item, we focused in on our health services, and you can see the items that we did with nursing, as well as counseling and nursing clinic updates. ESER 3 is our final funding source and has learning recovery as our primary priority. Bulleted below are several of the resources leveraged with this funding, and again, let me allow you a moment to review these. One of the exciting things through our ESER grant, especially with our ESER 3, are the learning recovery resources, which you see in the third column and second bullet. It's allowed us to bring in a lot of adaptive resources that allow our kids to, and our, our teaching staff, to really push the envelope around not just our assessments and what we do to assess, but all the resources that can help support learning in the classroom. Here we have our COVID update. This slide depicts the continuum of COVID-19 for 2022-23. We continue to give a shout-out to our nurses, who are incredible, as they continue to handle what you see in the pattern of data. Their systems developed over three years continue to be tested. Our nurses, along with our custodial staff, continue to implement our strategies to effectively mitigate any new variants or surges that may happen throughout the school year. And you can see, as we began the school year, as kids came back together, we saw the increase, and as we implemented all of our mitigating strategies, you can see the decline that occurred throughout that. Every six months, we must conduct outreach to our community. One way we do this is through a survey. Listed are the respondents to our survey by category. The survey helps to influence our leverage learning and safe return to in-person instruction plans. Survey respondents have an opportunity to provide written feedback. In the bottom-right corner, what you see are the words that were most represented through their written feedback, and students throughout the survey respondents stood out the most. We wanted to grade how the district was performing in our core areas around education, SEL, and safety. Overall, 92% of respondents gave us a passing grade, with 74% giving us an A or B around this, these particular areas. Last year, the district installed our bipolar ionization equipment at every campus to remove any contaminants that flowed through the air. Knowing this, we asked our respondents how, the type of, the level of confidence that they had around this. 78% gave us a rating of confidence, or slightly more confident, walking in, which is a great aspect to come back out of the pandemic, which we're still rolling through, but to have kids come in this school year ready, classroom-ready. Overall, we asked on this question, what grade would it give based on the emotional, oh, this slide's already gone through. Just want to give it to you a second time to look at it. But this one, again, references the areas of what we did around education, and gave a passing rate between an A, B, and C, and 92% rated us passing in those areas. This area, I'm going to give you a moment to review, but this one wanted to evaluate a number of areas, and I've highlighted on the left the areas that I wanted you to focus around. We took what were the highest evaluated areas and the lowest evaluated areas. Let me give you a moment to review this. In this, I've highlighted several areas in the survey, from the highest to the lowest passing grade, the highest being 94% respondents. passing grade, the highest being 94% responding with a passing grade for assessing our students' academic progress and technology supports, to 85% feeling we are addressing our students' mental health, but that rated as the lowest area. This slide may seem familiar to you. I want you to recall back when we first talked about the software resources that we would use to keep us informed about our students' learning recovery. Those systems are listed across the top and by grade level. Below it, we emphasize the importance of Tier 1 instruction, which is our first and best delivery of learning in the classroom. This is coupled with a blended support of our learning recovery teachers and our learning recovery specialists. This year, what we did was, we did not remove learning recovery teachers or reduce that number. We allowed our campuses to increase what that number was, so that we can have smaller learning groups. We also doubled the number, or provided the opportunity to double the number of our learning recovery specialists, where we were going to go from 115, or two per every campus, to go to four for every campus. You can see what those numbers look like. Much like what was shared earlier, you know, there is a struggle around teachers and also retired teachers coming back, which is our learning recovery specialist. Have a great opportunity for those individuals to come back to the school this year and be paid on the hourly rate based on their years of service. Here we begin our first to third grade data with AMIRA. Our BOY data for AMIRA shows that 51% of our first to third graders are on or above grade level, which is an exciting part to know, that those students are coming into new learning and already sit at that level. I've highlighted two areas on this chart that indicate those students who are either one year behind, and those students who are a half year or more ahead. As we progress through the year, we'll then be a comparison between our BOY data to our MOY data, our middle of the year, and to our EOI data, our end of year. This chart represents our WAGL growth measures that we have for our fourth and fifth grade students. Our WAGL indicator for fourth and fifth grades show that 43% of our students performed in their new grade level, at or above grade level. It's an indicator that our students are coming in ready. There's still work that we need to complete and get taken care of, but it's interesting to note that students are approaching new materials and new grade level information, more rigorous environment, that they're coming in with an opportunity of almost half our Let me allow you a moment to review this chart. Here you see I stationed on our middle school reading language arts students, where we have over 50% of our students in sixth and seventh grade performing slightly below or on track, and just under 50% of our eighth grade students performing on track or close to being on track. Here we have an interesting point with our MAP growth data for our high schools for ninth and 10th grade. This is done with NWEA MAP, which you see in the top left corner. If you recall from last year, MAP did norm setting before the pandemic. They set what we call the expected score for BOY, MOY, as well as EOI, end of year, beginning of year, middle of year, end of year. The orange line shows the beginning of year norm that was set pre-pandemic, and it shows that we aren't that far off from where we have been before 2020. This isn't necessarily a number of success, because the base is, it's based on growth every individual time that you assess. The best gauge will be where MAP expects the average students nationally to be at BOY. The data indicates that our ninth grade students are six points behind MAP's expected score, and our 10th graders are eight points behind MAP's expected score. A clear shout out to our reading language arts teachers and curriculum staff for the work they have put in for our high school students and their learning recovery. Finally, you see our NWEA MAP, K-12 Math BOY data, where 65% of our kinder through eighth grade and 62% of our Algebra I, eighth grade through 12th grade students who are taking Algebra I, show that they are on or above grade level in their performance. Well, I want to thank you for your patience as we walk through our ESER efforts to address our core areas. I'd like to take any questions if there are any.
So this is the beginning, and so as we move to our middle of the year around the January timeframe, we'll be able to assess what growth looks like between the start of the year, middle of the year, and then we'll then assess middle of the year to end of the year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Riddick, thank you for the information. At this time, we will close our regular meeting, and we will conduct a public hearing for feedback on the use of ESER funds. If anyone in the audience wishes to address this board regarding the use of ESER funds, we hear from you at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and reopen our regular meeting.
Thank you.
So Mr. Bingham has requested that information via, okay. Next item is discussion item. Taylor is, we're going to hear from you now. Discussion of District-Wide Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings. Mr. Taylor Morris.
If y'all remember from last month, we, or I introduced the intruder audits that are happening across the state. We have continued to have those audits at our schools. We've had of our 52 campuses that'll get audited this year, we've had 12 so far, and there are no findings to report at this time. I like that report, too.
Next item on the agenda is under construction. It's an action item to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the Eastfield Auditorium. Mr. Don Poole. And Graham Bowman with WRA.
Well, School Board, Board President, Dr. Rivera, thanks for having us tonight. We're here for the Aquatics Center, for the GMP. With me tonight, I've got from WRA, Graham Bowman, and Roland Chintery from Lee Lewis. I've got Chase Parsons from Construction Services, I have Jake Russell, and, but we're here tonight for a GMP on the Aquatics Center. If any questions, I have all the experts here with me. We're seeking for the GMP of $9,704,011, and with a total construction cost of $10,879,251.94.
Do we have any questions?
Any questions from the board? We have a motion by Mr. Seward, and a second by Ms. Whitlock, to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the Eastfield Auditorium at $9,704,011. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, this will be a tremendous benefit, not only for Mesquite ISD, but also for the city of Mesquite and our community. Next item on the agenda is under business. It's an action item to approve the independent audit for the 2021-22 Financial Operations. Mr. Prado.
Good evening, President Everett, Board of Trustees, Dr. Rivera. Tonight, you will have the results of the audit for 2021-22. I have Mr. Lupe Garcia from Whitley Penn will be doing the presentation tonight. I also want to recognize Dr. Faith Ann Cheek. She did a lot of the work. She's also in the audience, and they have done an extremely well job for this audit. So I will turn it over to Mr. Garcia.
President Everett, Trustees, Dr. Givetta, good evening. I'm here tonight to present to you the results of the fiscal year 2022 financial statement audit and federal single audit. Responsibilities of all the parties involved. Management's responsibility in this process is to set adequate and appropriate internal controls, or what we call policies and procedures and processes, to record transactions year round in order for it to be able to prepare accurate and timely financial statements. The Board of Trustees, the Audit Committee, they provide oversight to ensure management is in fact carrying out those duties. And then we come in as your external auditors. We perform a variety of tests and procedures in order to determine whether or not your financial statements are indeed fairly stated. The objective of the financial statement audit is just that, we're expressing an opinion as to whether or not these financial statements can be fairly relied upon, and are they prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This report has to be released within 150 days of the fiscal year end of the district. It has to be submitted to the Texas Education Agency by November 27, and there's a variety of federal and state agencies, other stakeholders, that are continuing disclosure requirements that are waiting for this report to be issued. Our financial statement audit does not give the district a clean bill of health. Using the information in this report, you can perform an analysis and come to that conclusion, but what our opinion indicates is that the financial statements are fairly stated. You can use them for that purpose of performing an analysis like that. The audit process takes several months to complete. The first phase of field work is referred to as interim field work, where we focus on internal controls and on compliance over federal programs. We test internal controls. Management tells us how the district operates. We can't just rely on that understanding. We actually have to select transactions and see how they were approved, how were they documented, how were they supported, properly supported, in order to conclude on the overall population of transactions. Once the district's fiscal year is over, and the district has an opportunity to post closing entries, we return for the second phase of field work, where it's more financial in nature. We're confirming information directly with third parties, financial institutions, the state, your legal counsel. We're performing a variety of analytical procedures, and over all these months, we're obtaining evidence to support our opinion on the financial statements. As external auditors, we can express a variety of opinions. I'll just cut to the chase here and report that we've expressed an unmodified opinion. So that's the best outcome in a financial statement audit. That's what you want to have in your annual financial report, is that unmodified opinion from your external auditor. We do also perform a compliance audit over your major programs, your federal programs in fiscal year 2022. Those included Title I and your ESER funding, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding. The total schedule of expenditures of the federal awards was $68.4 million, and then the major programs tested in the single audit were $10.8 million and $21 million. So you can see that was almost half of your CIFA there. As part of the audit, we do bring things to management's attention. Nothing rose to the level of being a material weakness or significant deficiency, where it would be in the report that goes out publicly, but we did bring things to management's attention, and so those are listed on this slide here. Munis is the district's financial software. We did note that there were some roles within the district that posed a segregation of duties or incompatible duties, so we wanted management to take a closer look at that to make sure, try to separate those as much as possible, as well as setting up the, how the software posts certain transactions, the interfund activity, the do-to-do-firms, reconciling transfers in and out, just for operating effectiveness and efficiency, and using the capabilities of the software to its fullest extent. For fiscal year 2022, the food service budget was exceeded, so making sure management monitors that during the year and brings budget amendments to you as needed throughout the year before the year is over. We test purchase orders, and we expect for purchase orders to be approved before the vendor issues an invoice to the district, meaning that all the steps happen in order. You know, we had a sample of 40, and we had nine instances where the purchase order was dated after the invoice date. That happens from time to time, but that was just a little higher. The frequency was a little higher than we were comfortable with, so just something to bring to management's attention, to look on and focus on, as it works with the various departments and campuses, as well as reconciling their grants throughout the year. Going into some of your financial statement highlights, your government-wide financial statements are prepared on an accrual basis of accounting, similar to the private sector. You had cash investments of $379 million as of the end of the fiscal year. You had outstanding bonds payable and unamortized premiums totaling $816 million, which was a decrease of $41.2 million from the previous fiscal year. The district also reports two liabilities related to its retiree benefits through its participation in the teacher retirement system of Texas. These two liabilities represent the district's proportionate share of the overall planned liability. These aren't liabilities that you'll ever write a check for and pay off. This is just something you have to report in your financial statements in order to prepare financial statements that are generally accepted accounting principles based. The first liability is the net pension liability, which decreased by $60 million. The TRS has an August 31 fiscal year end, so the information in your report is as of August 31, 2021. Well, the year that ended August 31, 2021, did great in terms of the stock market, investments, so the liability decreased drastically at TRS since the value of all the investments increased. This time next year, it'll be a completely different story, and that liability will probably bounce right back to where it was before. Net OPEB liability, that's other post-employment benefits, that's related to retiree healthcare. This plan is a little different, because the contributions that go into this plan immediately go out to fund current year benefits. There's not really anything being set aside to earn interest for future benefits. So that liability, and because we're talking about healthcare, it's a lot more volatile, so that liability did increase during the year by $4 million. But again, that's a financial reporting amount only the district budgets and contributes to TRS exactly like it's supposed to. There's three budgetary comparison schedules in your report. The first one I'll go over is your general fund. Revenues of $386 million were less than your budgeted amounts by $3.8 million. Expenditures were less than budgeted amounts by $22.4 million. Overall, expenditures exceeded revenues by $12.1 million, and you also had a transfer out of the general fund to your capital projects fund that was approved by the Board of $42.1 million. That all contributed to the decrease in the general fund fund balance of $54.8 million for an ending balance as of the end of the fiscal year of $117.4 million. That gets reported in a few different categories. You have your non-spendable fund balance, 2.4, which is inventory and prepaid items. You have amounts that have been committed for particular purposes of $29.5 million. Just because it's been committed doesn't mean it's been spent. It can always be uncommitted. It's just been earmarked for a particular purpose. And then anything that doesn't fall in those two categories is referred to as assigned or unassigned fund balance, and that was $85.4 million as of the end of the fiscal year. This is a visual illustration of your general fund revenues, the district's main operating account. 65% of your revenues come from state aid. Another 25% comes from your property tax revenue, or the maintenance and operations portion of your tax rate. There's TRS on behalf state revenue of $20 million, which is our payments made by the state directly to TRS on your behalf, so it really isn't any cash that flows to the district, but the district has to record that nonetheless. You have school health and related services of $10 million, which represents 3% of the general fund revenue, and the remaining 2% of your revenue comes from insurance recovery and interest earnings and other miscellaneous local revenue sources. Looking at your expenditures in the general fund, no surprise here, 61%, the vast majority of your general fund goes to instruction and instruction-related services, services that impact students directly in the classroom. Maintenance and operations is 10% of your general fund at $41.1 million. 8% goes to instructional and school leadership, $31.1 million. 6% for student support services, 5% for security monitoring and data processing services, and then each remaining category of expenditures in your general fund is 2% or less, including general administration at a low 3% of your general fund expenditures. So looking at your unassigned and assigned fund balance for the last five fiscal years, we have fiscal year 2022 with 89.5 of unassigned and 32.3 million of assigned fund balance. It did decrease from the prior year, primarily because you had that transfer to the capital projects fund at the end of the year for $42 million. What's more beneficial is like, what percentage of fund balance do you have in comparison to your expenditures? So for fiscal year 2022, your unassigned and assigned fund balance represented 21.4% of your general fund expenditures. of your general fund expenditures. Again, that's a decrease from the year before, just because you had the transfer to the capital projects fund of $42 million. Your total fund balance in the general fund over the last five fiscal years is shown on this slide. 29% of your general fund fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends 60 to 90 days, which is, you know, around 25%. So you can see you're well within that range for a healthy fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. This isn't a savings account. Your fund balance is how you operate the district, you know, cash flow-wise. This is how you make payments to vendors, payments to employees, until you start collecting more property taxes in the December, January, February timeframe. The second and third budgetary comparison schedules in the report. The first one I'll go over is your child nutrition program budget. Revenues were more than budgeted amounts by $6 million. Your expenditures were more than your final budgeted amounts by $800,000 there. Overall, you did have an increase in this fund of $5.4 million for an ending balance of 11.2 million. The debt service fund, which is the fund that you report your interest and sinking portion of your tax rate in, and as well as the payments that made on your long-term debt, principal and interest. Revenues were less than budgeted amounts by 2.8 million. Your expenditures were less than budgeted amounts by 1.2 million. Overall, you had a decrease in fund balance in the debt service fund of 6.3 million for an ending balance of 70.4 million. You have, you need that fund balance at the end of the year to make your debt service payment in August, which was $41 million. So that completes my prepared remarks. I would like to thank the district for its cooperation through each phase of the audit. We do ask for a tremendous amount of information to review. We ask questions. We have to meet with individuals. So we're here on time presenting this report to you, so that speaks volumes to your staff and their preparedness. So if there are any questions about the audit, the report, or the results, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
Board, any questions?
I just wanted to thank you for the job you did on this. I know doing audits of this type of district this size are complicated, and we had some transition issues coming through. Although there's some timing issues, I know in the future we'll have this report a little bit earlier. But I'm pleased with the report and the information we've received this year. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
This board has a fiduciary responsibility to the patrons of this community to see that this district is operated in a fiscally responsible way. So thank you very much for this information. I know a lot of staff were involved in this. Dr. Cheek, thank you very much. We'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Ms. Whitlock and a second by Mr. Bingham to approve the independent audit for the 2021-22 financial operations. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is an action item, an update on the teacher retirement system active care. Mr. Hasso?
Dr. Rivera, board, good evening. We appreciate this opportunity to update you on TRS active care. If you recall, in October, you guys took action, the board took action, to allow us to exit from TRS active care in order to get information to make a more fully informed decision as far as whether we would get back into TRS active care, or if we would pursue a self-funded option. Tonight's presentation, very brief presentation hopefully, will be in several components, a summary of work, what actually is opting out, key data pieces used to inform our recommendation, and then at the end, the actual recommendation. So as we go through this, it's important to note that some goals that Dr. Rivera set for us were that employee premiums stay flat, because we want our employees to realize the largest amount of take-home salary that we can, assuming that we are able to give salary increases, or even with the current salary that they have. And then number two is, to the best level possible, continue the services in as seamless a way as possible, so that they don't feel any interruption of service, that type of thing. So we see before you the scope of work, or the summary of work. Several meetings along the way, starting in August, and as late as, I believe, last week, where we got in-depth and discussed various factors in this decision. The committee, it was a committee approach, and so Dr. Rivera, obviously, is part of that committee. Dr. Feltes from the Mesquite Employee Health Center, Mr. Bingham, Mr. Bingham here, who has actually a background in insurance, those kind of things. And so you can see the remainder of the committee makeup. Lockton Dunning Benefits, our consultant, was also a driving force in that work. Please feel free to stop me with any questions you might have along the way. So we have this, as we transition, we have this opportunity to seek other healthcare benefits, because of Senate Bill 1444. And that allows school districts or employers, rather, to annually or routinely evaluate their options, which is what we're doing now in this case. Self-funded, what does that mean? In layman's terms, it means that the district would assume the cost of benefits claims versus what we have now, where TRS active care assumes those costs for benefit claims. Some considerations that the committee took into account, you can see at the bottom of the slide, employers in TRS active care that decide to remain in the plan can still decide to leave in future years. Remember, we talked about we're able to assess our status annually. Employers who do leave TRS active care must remain out for five years, and that's a TRS guideline or rule. So that's an important distinction or consideration. We also take into consideration that we have an employee health center that many school districts do not have. And then, to the best of our ability with the info that we have, information that we have, considering the viability, financial viability of TRS, of the actual TRS active care system as we move forward. So as we get to the data portion, one thing, because of your action in October that allowed us to leave TRS active care, we were able to get our benefits or our claims data, so that we could make a more informed decision on whether we would pursue self-funded or return to active care. The graph in front of you, I have to look at the screen a little bit. The graph in front of you represents from left, the leftmost column is school year 2021, all the way across to the far right, which is a projection for 2022, 23, if I'm looking at this correct, 23, 24, I'm sorry. I'll call your attention to the third column, and I believe that is 22, 23, emerging. And so it's important for us to understand, oh, one other thing, I'm sorry, as we begin, as we continue to study the graph, the dark component, the dark portion of the column, are the employee contributions, and the lighter gray portion is the district contribution. So if you look at the 2022-23 school year, it's important to know that additional funding was provided by the state with federal funds to help offset the cost of the benefits. And so in that graphic, and in that bar, particular column, rather, the district contribution was less, and that's an important distinction. As we go across, you see the next three columns are represented by rectangle there, and they're projections from our Lockton Consulting Group. One is for a low projected increase in costs of TRS active care. The middle is a middle of the road, or mid-level increase, and then the far one would be a high increase. And so with those, you can see that on the low, it would be 25.5 million total, and the district contribution would be 15.5 million compared to 12.6 million now. If you skip forward to the highest one, the highest projection, that would be 27.5 million, 17.5 million of which would be on the district. And you notice that the cost of the benefit to the employee would stay static. That was one of our goals, or would remain flat. And then finally, the last column would be the projection if we go self-insured. That would be for a total of 28.2 million, with the district cost of 18.6. But we're going to dig a little further into that, because there's some cost savings that we can realize there. Again, along the way, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. So now, we go to self-funded. So again, the first column is the 2022-23, our current year. We know that there were additional funds provided by the state to offset the cost. I'll call your attention all the way across to the last column, and that is self-funded projection, plan changes and savings that we could possibly have. So that would cost a total of 26.9 million, 17.3 million of which would be from the district. Those planned savings are outlined at the bottom, in the bottom portion of the slide. So I'll read along with you. All plans utilize high-performing networks through Blue Cross Blue Shield. This is basically the use of facilities and doctors that increase our cost savings by funneling our employees through them. The projected savings could be 975,000. Increasing the rate of generic utilization by two points would buy back, so to speak, 134,000. And then at bottom, make, move more clinic, I'm sorry, prescriptions through pass-through methodology. Currently, our pharmacy, depending on the drug, there's all types of rebates that we, "we" air quotes, get. In the current TRS system, those rebates do not get realized by the district. They get realized by the system, TRS. So by going self-funded, we have the capability to benefit from those full rebates for our So with all that being said, the healthcare committee considered operational costs, risks, the historical claims data. Remember, you're allowing us to leave the system, provided us an opportunity to get our claims data, so that we could have informed decisions. And then we also considered the expansion of the health center, which will be upcoming in the upcoming months. So when we took all of that into account, and we remained focused on our goal of keeping costs flat for our employees, and providing seamless, as possible seamless service to their medical benefits, our recommendation is that we leave the TRS active care system and implement a self-funded system. So with that being said, I'm a dog person, so I hope you enjoy the meme as much as I did. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
We had a...
So for our employees, for our teachers and staff, there should be no difference. You won't feel a difference when this happens.
Yeah, well, there's, to the greatest extent possible, Ms. Collier, because there's several variables that we can't control. So for instance, some doctors, all the doctors, for instance, would have to choose to be a part of the plans that we're going to implement into our system. We believe that that will happen pretty much uninterrupted, but we don't control that variable. So that's why we say to the greatest extent possible.
Makes sense. Okay.
Yeah, we had a workshop on this prior to the start of this meeting, in pretty detail. A lot of questions were answered at that time. Anybody else have anything else to add?
No, I just want to echo what Mr. Hasso said. This is a tough problem for all districts and for all businesses, the cost of health insurance. And we're trying very hard to do the best thing for our employees. We're making a significant commitment to hold the premiums, so that they'll recognize that. Hopefully, they'll see and appreciate that when they get their paychecks. And we're making a significant commitment to provide better and more access to the clinic over a period of time, and trying to control our costs by getting our group healthier and taking a little bit more control in-house. I think it's a good decision.
Yeah, and if I could echo what was just said by Mr. Bingham, you know, that realizing greater take-home salary, we're keeping your costs flat, that's a retention strategy. That's an extremely important retention strategy. And, you know, we heard earlier about the teacher shortage and those kind of things. So we need to keep hold of our people as much as possible.
This will show that we value all of our employees, and so that's one of the major objectives of this. We'll entertain a motion.
Can we just say something?
Okay.
To approve this, yeah.
Second? Anybody have a second? Mr. Bingham? We have a motion by Ms. Collier and a second by Mr. Bingham to leave the TRS active care and implement a self-funded system. Is that adequate, Scott? Is that motion okay? I just, I didn't know what exactly how to...
We've actually already taken action on this. We're just affirming it.
We're saying yes.
You've already taken action. We're just, yes, we've updated you on our...
Saying what?
Yeah. You're accepting our recommendation, I guess.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I would like to thank the committee that worked on this for months, including our own board member, Mr. Gary Bingham, with his expertise in insurance. Appreciate you being on that, adding your expertise in it.
Thank you, Mr. Hasso. Next item on the agenda under business is an action item to approve budget amendment. Mr. Prado?
He's already suspended, buddy.
Good evening, President Everett, Board of Trustees, Dr. Rivera. In front of you, you have a budget-neutral budget amendment, going from instructional resources, function 11, to library services, mostly for requests related to furniture in the libraries. So it is $100,000 going from one function to the other, and it has no impact to the fund balance.
I have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Ms. Whitlock to approve budget amendment number two for the 2022-23 budget, if there's any discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Last item on the agenda is to approve an application for registration of IO intellectual property. Mr. Thomas?
Good evening, President Everett, board members, Dr. Rivera. In order to protect the district's intellectual property and the IO software and application, we recommend that the district apply for copyright and trademark registration with the United States Patent and Trademark Office. Thus, we're asking the board to approve us to move forward with that application process. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
So move. We have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Mr. Seward to approve the application, the registration of IO intellectual property. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Does anybody have anything to add? I would like to recognize our Mesquite Education Foundation. They held the amazing Santa Color 5K run-and-walk this past Saturday, and I know many of our staff were involved, some of our board members were involved. I'd like to recognize Randy Llewellyn, the executive director, and the administrative assistant, Lori Bailey. They always do a fantastic job with our education foundation, and of course, President Greg Noche and all the board of directors. Initial indication is that this was the most successful run that they've experienced thus far, so we congratulate them in advance. Dr. Rivera, you want to add anything?
I would add to that, with some other events, that we had the Replay Talk Festival at the mall, and the community showed out in bulk with their support. And then all the, I believe every campus in the district had some type of a fall festival or trunk retreat. And I wish we had numbers, because thousands of community members came out with their kids to do some neighborhood and family, community things, and it was a great turnout for all that. So I just want to thank the community for their support.
It's been after COVID, the Mesquite Aziz is open for business, and we're coming into the community. Get used to it. All the campuses, there's been a lot of events occurring in the last at least three at least three weeks, and people have been coming out. So we like to see that. Continue to engage with us, we're open for business.
Yeah, and we recognize Lindsay Paris and all of the hard work that she puts in from Replay Talk as well. She does a fantastic job. Well, with no other items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.